Are we webcasting? Thank you. Right. The minutes of the last meeting. Can we confirm the minutes of the last meeting? Thank you. Apologies for absence, Mr Taylor.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. We have received apologies from councillors David Else, Jill Hargreaves, Nicholas Holder, Carol King, Stephen Mulliner and Peter Isherwood.
Thank you. Declarations of interest have we received?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Councillor Maurice Byam has declared a pecuniary interest in item 56 of the first of September executive minutes and will leave the chamber during discussion of that item.
Thank you for that. Are there any further declarations? No? Okay. Then we move on to Mayor's announcements. First thing I'd like to do is to thank all those who participated and sponsored me in the sponsored walk which took place in September. In all, about 30 people participated in various sections of the walk, although probably only about 10 actually went the full distance of the Greensand Way, right the way from Hazelmead to Euhurst. Thanks to all your efforts and those who donated, we've raised just under £3,000 for the two charities to date. If anybody would still like to donate, the donation websites are still open, or alternatively, I'd be very happy to pass donations on to the respective charities. In terms of Dan's Fund, I have an apology to make. I did talk about a gala ball taking place in December, on the 19th of December. I have to say that it's been overwhelmed through the priority booking. It's all gone, all the tables have gone. So, I apologise, I've not put it out for general circulation. There is the possibility there may be some cancellations, so if anybody would still like to come, please do let me or Alison know and we'll put your name forward. There is, however, going to be a concert at St Catherine's in March for Dan's Fund, on the 19th of March, Saturday the 19th of March, if you want to put a date in your diary. And we won't use the priority booking system next time, we'll open it straight to all and sundry to get everybody a chance to get at that particular event. I've been to, as most of my predecessors will no doubt vouch for, volunteering is a huge thing in Waverley, and I've been privileged to go to three events where the Queen's Award for Voluntary Service has been made to organisations in the borough. I think so, a great recognition of the voluntary work that goes on in our borough, because as most of you are probably aware, the Queen's Award for Voluntary Service is the equivalent of an MBE, and it respects all the volunteers involved, so it's a very significant award. I've also been involved in a presentations of British Empire medals for individual volunteers, and that's another reintroduction of an older award, which has now come back again for the volunteer sector, and I think it's really great to see this being done in the borough. Of course, to remind you about volunteering, I do have my Volunteers' Garden Party on Thursday afternoon at Charterhouse, so I look to see you there as many as possible, because it really is our opportunity to really give thanks on behalf of Waverley for all the volunteering that goes on, because it really is a tremendous effort in the borough. So, moving on, but that's really all I really want to mention from my affairs, so moving on to questions from members of the public, Mr Hyman again. Mr Hyman?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. In 2013, redacted notes of the council's Brightwell Steering Group meetings were obtained under the Freedom of Information Act, which confirmed that numerous changes to the design and content of the East Street scheme are to be made, and so for more than two years Farnham's been patiently awaiting further news. In particular, the council had confirmed that planning applications will be necessary for both the changes to the design and use of Block D20 due to the removal of the Brightwell Gostrey Centre, and, secondly, the changes to the arrangements for the dedicated temporary construction access to use a Bailey Bridge and Burrelli Walk. Now, in respect of the latter, the intended change is to use a Bailey Bridge design launched from the South River Bank, requiring that Burrelli Walk be used as a site compound and hall route from South Street. That was confirmed by council documents in July, and as it involves significant impacts outside of the area scope and parameters of the existing EIA for the project, the law requires prior environmental assessment. Indeed, the Planning Department's own advice confirmed that, again, received under Freedom of Information, it stated that in respect to the revised construction access proposals, a new planning application would need to be submitted, as it would be notably different to the extant scheme, and that as per the previous scheme, all necessary updates to the environmental statement would need to be carried out and submitted upfront with a new application. The minor works conducted by Crest in August were intended to service material starts for the revised Brightwells and Construction Access Developments, but as the necessary planning applications and prior assessments of impacts is still awaited, it's quite obvious that the required consent for those works cannot exist, and the assumed past permissions cannot lawfully apply. So, Mr Mayor, in view of those simple facts, can members in the public be assured that the council will not allow any further demolition works or tree felling for the East Street project to be carried out until planning permissions for all the known changes to the scheme, including those outlined above, have been obtained? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Hyman. Portfolio for Brightwells, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and good evening, and thank you for your question, Mr Hyman. I think you, apologies, Mr Mayor, I think you may be under the impression that further planning applications are required before the scheme can be implemented. This is not, however, the case, because the planning consents for both the main Brightwell scheme and the temporary bridge from the site to the A31 have been lawfully implemented. A number of conditions are in place which control the development, and that includes a requirement that before bridge works take place, to further implement the main scheme, the temporary bridge is constructed. However, if Chris Nicholson wished to amend the consented scheme, then it will be for them to submit the necessary planning application to Waverley, which will then be assessed in the normal way against the relevant planning considerations. Thank you. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Question time. Any questions being received from members? Mr Taylor?
None received, Mr Mayor.
Motions?
None received.
Thank you. And then we move on to the minutes of the executive held on the 1st of September. Leader?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I propose the minutes of the executive held on the 1st of September 2015. I have a second.
Thank you. Please to second, Mr Mayor.
The first item is minute 54, which is Budget Management. There is one recommendation, and that is set out on page 10.
Any speakers?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just to point out that there is an amended sheet for the table on page 10 that was made available to all members.
In that case, we go to the recommendation? Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Minute 55 is the Play Area Strategy 2015 to 2024. There is one recommendation on page 14.
Okay. Do we have any speakers? Councillor Thornton?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The Play Strategy provides the council with a comprehensive document that develops policy, options, action plans and the establishment of local standards for play provision and refurbishment project, promotes health and well-being, seeks to improve the accessibility of the council's play areas to ensure they are inclusive and possible to encourage children of all abilities to play in the equipped play space together, and integrates with the council's open space study, PPG17, and the Future Local Plan. I commend the recommendation on page 14. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Williamson?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to compliment the portfolio holder and the concerned officers on this absolutely fine piece of work. The objective and the implementation of continual improvement of play and the area provision is to be really commended. I'm particularly impressed by the new play area in Farnham Park, which I know the mayor opened recently. I would, however, appreciate some clarification on the consultation process that took place around the play area. I've been asked by a number of local residents to justify the £96,000 spent on the project. So, the points for clarification are basically, were the people involved in the selection of their favourite design made aware of the price associated with that selection, and was the eventual design which was chosen, was that put out to competitive bid? Thank you.
Councillor Bolton?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I would like to thank the council for funds to improve the children's play area on Aaron's Hill in My Ward. I look forward to seeing the completion of the work. I would like to especially thank the local residents, led by St Mark's Community Centre, who raised funds in memory of a young local woman who died tragically of cancer recently. The young woman was very popular in the community and an active volunteer. The fundraising was supported by Surrey County Councillor Peter Martin, and the funds will be used to fund one of the children's swings. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Anybody else want to speak? Councillor Byam?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just a late thing, I too praise the officers and the portfolio for an excellent report. Of course, there are a number of anomalies in a number of places, like Bramley have their own parish council-supported play areas as well as the Waverley-supported area, and that causes confusion from the villages as to what they might achieve in terms of improvements or changes or whatever. So, I just would like to flag up the point that there is some strong support now coming forward for a skateboard area, hopefully a fairly modest one, but a skateboard area in Bramley, and we hope that at some stage that can be supported, including the funding that we may well achieve from a variety of different sources. But if it happens, it's likely to happen on the most notable places, on the Waverley-owned play area itself. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Anybody else? Leader, do you want to come back and address some of the questions raised?
Thank you very much, yes. And I'd like to thank everybody for their congratulation on what has been achieved. I can't answer the questions because I don't have that detail regarding the Farnham Park, but we will write to the member after the meeting.
Thank you. Then we go to the recommendation, recommendation 21 on page 14. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you.
I need you to declare an interest on the second. Leave the chamber.
Leader?
Thank you. Minute 56, the Independent Remuneration Panel, a review of special responsibility allowance. This matter refers, as in the recommendation in the report, to the position of chairman and vice-chairman of the Joint Planning Committee. When the panel reviewed allowances a couple of years ago, that committee hardly ever sat, and therefore allowances were not felt to be payable. However, because of the number of times that it does sit now, the panel have reviewed that and decided that an allowance should be paid to the chairman and vice-chairman of that committee, and that is set out in the report and the recommendation. As it happens, the chairman is already a chairman of an area committee, so you don't get two allowances, so that wouldn't affect him. The vice-chairman would indeed receive an allowance. Recommendation 22, page 16, I commend it to council.
Any speakers? Councillor Else?
Thank you. Apologies, Mr Mayor, my telephone, I'm sorry about that. Sorry, a bigger problem, thank you. I just would like to know if this allowance is very much higher than any other chairman's allowance, and I understand there may well be a reason for that because of the workload, but I'm just interested to know, would the chairman have a choice and then be able to revert from his area chairman's allowances to JPC, which is probably about twice as much? That's all, I'd just like to know that.
Anybody else? Leader?
It should be the same, and the officers are just checking to make sure that it is the same.
On the basis that it is the same...
I have the list of all allowances, and it is identical, the same as the other committees.
In that case, three apologies, one after the other, Mr Mayor, I'm sorry.
Thank you. On that basis, having resolved that outstanding question, we go to the recommendation, recommendation 22 on page 16. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you.
Minute 57, the HRA Asset Management Strategy 2015-2020. Now, Waverley's five-year housing revenue account assets management strategy sets out the council's approach to managing all of its housing-related properties. The strategy draws on existing property survey data to identify what work is needed to ensure that the council's housing stock is properly maintained and continue to meet the needs of our local residents. There is one recommendation on page 18, I commend it to council.
Thank you. Speakers, we have one. Councillor Merrylies?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I've been asked to address what is probably a question of value for money in relation to Waverley's housing assets and current projects. We've got a number of projects like Godlemings Station Road and Oxford Ridge Development schemes, and I see that Oxford Ridge is mentioned at minute 57.5, and I'm simply seeking clarification regarding the cost and value for money of these projects. If I recall correctly, the cost of the Station Road affordable housing we're building is in the region of 1.65 million, and I'm not sure how many houses we're building for that money, whether the costings figure includes the land value and the years of staff time involved. And similarly, it seems we're spending over 7 million on regeneration at Oxford Ridge, but I can't work out the number of homes we will gain for that money. There's no criticism of the projects themselves, but it's important that we're obtaining value for the public funds we're investing. So, can someone please provide us with the cost and the number of homes gained in those projects, and whether the cost includes land value and staff time?
Thank you for that. Any other speakers? Okay. Leader, do you want to comment?
Thank you. Well, I can assure the members that we do value for money, and some of that land is ours, so we haven't purchased it, but we will provide a detailed answer. It would be useful if members are going to ask detailed questions to give notice before, then we can give a detailed answer without knowledge. We can't kind of fire from the hip on millions of pounds, so we will supply a written reply.
Thank you. So, it goes to the recommendation, recommendation 23 on page 18. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. That concludes part one of the report of the minutes. I think you have speakers in part two.
Thank you. On item 58, Councillor Williamson?
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. The annual governance statement says in respect of the executive forward programme that for most key decisions made by the executive, the council is required to publish in advance information about the matter to be decided, who will be making the decision, and the date or time scale for the decision, and the place where that decision will be made. So, as the audit report claims that the East Street development has commenced, though I and a number of other people don't believe that it has, could some light be thrown on, one, when the removal of the Brightwell Gostrey Centre as a required element of the scheme will take place, and, secondly, when will the landlord approval for this changed scheme be brought to this council? Thank you.
Leader, do you want to respond?
Thank you. When the information is available, there will be an all-member briefing, it will appear on the rolling programme, and it will come to both executive and this council.
Item 60, Councillor Forosevsky?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. That came round rather quickly. On pages 29 to 31 on the executive meeting report in September 2015, it states, "The council remains fully committed to getting the local plan in place as soon as possible. It is a challenging piece of work that depends on the completion of a number of strands of evidence. At this stage, members are asked to note progress to date and approve the provision timetable set out in Annex One. It is recommended that the executive approves the provisional timetable set out in Annex One and notes the significant progress which has been made since the core strategy was withdrawn." This is really good news, it really, really is. I do believe the timetable is a little bit ambitious, but it's really great to see that we're getting on with it, and that is what we really, really need to do. But going forward, I would like to understand a little more about the involvement and the responsibilities of those who are involved, and from a progress point of view, what members can do to get more involved and add our contributions. But I would like to thank the portfolio holder, Councillor Adams. I found our conversation most helpful during the week, so thank you very much. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Merrylies?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. At the overview and scrutiny meeting held in September, I raised the issue of constraints on development on the Thames Basin and Wielden Heathes, which affects two-thirds of our borough. The officers' report stated that the evidence, finally, after all these years, was likely to be provided in early 2016. Therefore, by definition, we are not in possession of that convincing evidence, and so it seems there should be a temporary moratorium until such evidence is available. Or does the requirement for convincing objective evidence not apply to us in planning committee meetings? Can you clarify this, please?
Leader, would you like to comment?
I think, as has been said and in those papers of the executive, the timetable is set out, and the evidence which is being gathered, and there is a great deal of it, will be brought forward as soon as possible. I'm not sure about the legality of moratoriums. I think every case has to be looked at on its merit.
Thank you, Leader. Item 66, Councillor Forosevsky?
Thank you once again, Mr Mayor. With your indulgence, I have a slight confession. I was a little bit confused by the item as it refers to the public as opposed to a committee member, but having reread the constitution, I would like to say a very big thank you for the extra time.
Any comment, Mr Leader?
It's a great pleasure, thank you very much. That brings to a close those minutes, and I commend them to council.
Are they agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Executive on the 6th of October, Leader?
Indeed, I present the minutes of the executive meeting held on the 6th of October. I have a second.
Thank you. Please to second, Mr Mayor.
Mr Mayor, a number of items here, and you will see on most of them, there is even the part ones, there's some exempt material, so we may be able to deal with that without going into exempt, but I just highlight that. First is the budget management in August 2015. There are two recommendations on page 112.
Thank you. Are there any speakers? Councillor Fraser, I believe you wanted to speak on part of this.
Yes, sir. So... Thank you, Mr Mayor. This concerns the toilet, redundant toilet at the end of South Street. And the background to this is that Farnham Town Council has considered putting the building to good use, and have transmitted that to Waverley, by exploiting its position at the junction of St Switherne's Way and the North Downs Way. And such refurbishment, as is due, it would form a very good tourist information and refreshment facility. But Waverley has refused to transfer ownership to Farnham. And at that point, I'm going to abandon my prepared notes and make a plea from the heart rather than the head. It's a jolly good idea, and we've got someone interested in making this change, making this development, and for the cost of 6,500 pounds to knock it down, the refusal seems to be without logic. It has locally engendered a rumour, which we are doing our best to forestall, but the rumour being that the demolition of this toilet, along with the felling of trees in front of it, is necessary to grant Chris Nicholson access to their dreadful hallway to the bridge site. Now, that doesn't necessarily follow, I accept that, but I would ask council members to seriously examine their conscience as to why we are spending 6,500 pounds to knock down a perfectly serviceable structure when we have an offer of refurbishment and use. Can that be satisfactory answer, Mr General?
Any other speakers? I have one. Councillor Hout Frost?
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. I am delighted we are knocking down the South Street public conveniences. They are an eyesore, they are in the wrong place, and if we were to have a tourist information centre, we could have a far better one in a place in the town the tourists actually go. They do not go to this rundown site at the end by Hickley's Corner. So, I would welcome a tourist information centre, a proper one. At the moment, it's serviced by the town council, and they do an excellent job, but please, please do not consider leaving this eyesore as it is. My postbag is full of letters from the general public saying to me, "When are you going to knock it down?" Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Councillor Ramster?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I totally agree with what my colleague, Councillor Frost, has had to say, but I'd also like to say that this is, I understand, beyond financial recovery, and it's a small amount to pay to get things cleared out, I also understand that there's a refreshment centre, it's the wrong side of the road. What do you want, little children with ice cream competing with the traffic on South Street? Thank you.
Councillor Cobham?
It's all right, they know. Yeah, I completely agree with my two fellow councillors. It is an eyesore, that area, and it needs to be removed, and I agree with my fellow councillors regarding removing that public facility, because we have quite a few public facilities around Farnham, and it should be removed. Thank you.
My apologies, councillor Nazir, for forgetting your name. Anybody else? Right. Go to the recommendations that... Sorry, Leader, sorry, I beg your pardon. Leader?
Thank you very much. I think members have said a lot of what needs to be placed, but just for the record, since 2013, Waverley and Farnham Town Council's clerk discussed the possibility for the Farnham Town Council using the dilapidated rundown and redundant toilets in South Street, which were closed many years ago. Waverley was happy to transfer the building to Farnham Town Council for use as public toilets, however, that was not agreed and has not occurred.
toilets, however, that was not agreed and has not occurred. Waverley intend to build a new cafe in Gostrey Meadow in a central, safer location, and that has been discussed with the Farnham Town Council clerk, and the possibility of a joint operation was also discussed. And Waverley have had no formal response from Farnham Town Council or the clerk since the announcement of its proposals to build the new cafe in the Gostrey Meadow. Therefore, I commend the recommendation twenty-four and twenty-five on page one-one-two.
We go to those recommendations, twenty-four and twenty-five, remember that there are, twenty-five is in two parts, actually, there's an exempt on page one-twenty-eight, I don't think we want to speak there, but I mean, remember, that's where those recommendations are. So can I take those two recommendations together? Are they agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you. The minute seventy-two is the Strategy for Aging Well in Waverley in 2015 to 2020, and there is one recommendation on page one-one-five.
Are there any speakers? Councillor Jenny Els.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I would just like to congratulate the officers on an excellent programme of support for older people in our borough, and I know how much work has gone into this, and I'm very grateful for it. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Councillor Jim Edwards.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I too would like to congratulate the officers and the executive for this excellent programme. It is going to be more needed as we all get older, I probably should have expressed an interest here. However, I would like to single out councillor Kyle King, who was initiated a lot of the programme with the officers, and congratulate everybody concerned. It's an excellent programme, and we shall continue to work with Surrey County Council, I'm sure, because funds are very tight, as everybody knows, and the more we can do for our elderly residents, the better. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Okay, then we go to the recommendation on page one hundred and fifteen, recommendation twenty-six, is that agreed?
Agreed. Thank you. Minute seventy-three is Consultation of Outcomes on Proposals for the Development of Sheltered Services for Older People. This report sets out the outcomes of the Comprehensive Programme of Staff and Tenant Consultation on the Proposed Remodeling of the Council's Sheltered Housing Service. The council's proposals have received widespread support from tenants and staff, with no specific objections being raised. The proposal would enable service levels to be maintained in all the sheltered housing units despite reductions in external funding from Surrey County Council. The proposal would also retain a dedicated full-time manager for each sheltered unit and build on the growing success of the council's floating support service, which provides much-needed advice and support to older residents living in the community. There are five recommendations on page one-two-two, and I commend them to council.
Thank you, Leader. Are there any speakers? No? If not, we'll go straight to the recommendations, as Leader has said, five recommendations, twenty-seven through thirty-one, on page one-two-two, are they agreed?
Agreed.
Leader.
The final minute in part one, Mr Mayor, is seventy-four, Strategic Asset Management Plan for the General Front Property, with the one recommendation, recommendation thirty-two on page one-two-three.
Again, are there any speakers? No? If there are no speakers, go straight to the recommendations, recommendation thirty-two on page one-two-three, is that agreed?
Agreed.
That concludes the part one of those minutes, Mr Mayor. I think you have some speakers in part two.
Item seventy-six, councillor Frost, Pat Frost.
Thank you very much indeed, Mr Mayor. I was delighted to see this consultation at item seventy-six, car park review 2015. I want to be assured that this consultation will go to all parish and town councils, and I would like to know how we're actually going to carry out the consultation, and hope it will not just be on the website. However, could I beg your indulgence, Mr Mayor, because there is an issue that I would like to raise, and consultation is a word which is very interesting, and I'm delighted that in fact we are consulting the town council about the proposed new cafe. However, in the central car park in Farnham, we now seem to be having a car washing service. We did have one of these about three years ago, which was brought to a grinding halt because of the sediment etcetera that was being washed down into the drains of the car park. Now, I didn't know anything about this, and I would have thought, in wearing another hat as Mayor of Farnham, I might have done, but no, it's happening. And what makes it even worse is that we have just received in Farnham a request from Waverley Borough Council to allow the car washing facility to use the water provided and paid for by the taxpayers of Farnham. Could somebody please tell me when this was agreed, who it was agreed with, whether all council is aware of it here, or is it likely to happen elsewhere, and how this council might pay for another council's supply of water to a commercial outlet? Thank you.
I certainly am being indulgent allowing that, councillor Frost, but would Leader like to respond?
I can respond by saying councillor Frost has been on this so many years that she should know she's not going to get an answer to something that detailed, which the Leader won't know about, and under part two, the portfolio holder can't answer. Thank you.
Item seventy-seven, councillor Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The council is extremely supportive of the thriving voluntary sector in the borough that delivers vital services to all our residents. We work in close partnership with many of these organisations, and one way is through its various funding schemes. I'm pleased that the overall funding for the voluntary sector has remained the same for a number of years, three-quarters of a million pounds, despite the significant reduction the council has faced in its government grant. We will continue to protect funding to the voluntary sector which supports many of our most vulnerable residents as long as is possible. I am pleased therefore to propose the launch of the council's annual funding scheme, which provides vital funding towards the running costs of voluntary organisations delivering high priority services, and will encourage eligible organisations to apply. Alongside this, I propose to continue the successful commissioning pilot in partnership with Surrey County Council, which enables voluntary organisations to deliver projects to support the health and wellbeing of our residents. The council's funding schemes are highly regarded and demonstrate the great value we place on the work of the voluntary sector in our borough. Thank you.
Leader, do you want to add anything? Right. Item seventy-nine, councillor Fraser.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. It's understood that the Air Quality Action Plan is based upon figures provided to the council by Chris Nicholson, when their proposal to increase traffic congestion at the Royal Deer Junction, which can be alleviated only, as far as we can see, by diverting the A287 traffic, Folly Hill, Castle Hill, down the A3016, the Upper Hail Road, thereby moving the poor air quality from the Royal Deer Junction to the junction at the bottom of Upper Hail Road and Farnborough Road. For the benefit of our residents, can you please confirm whether or not that is the intention, that you have in mind the diversion of not only HGVs, but also a very high proportion of normal-weight traffic from the A287 onto the A3016 in order to alleviate traffic congestion and air quality in Farnham Town Centre?
Thank you. Councillor Williamson.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. I was very disappointed when I read this report. I'd expected to find an explanation of the measures in the Air Quality Annual Progress Report, and perhaps an update on its aims. A clue for that is in the title of the report, you know, a progress report, but there was no mention. So I checked the past progress reports, and found perhaps not surprisingly that Farnham's report hinges, as councillor Fraser was saying, hinges completely upon Chris Nicholson's new road proposals. Since these proposals will definitely increase the congestion, and hence the pollution, the whole report seems fictional. The law requires a genuine AQAP, which means that genuine solutions to Farnham's traffic and air quality conundrums need to be met. In my view, it's time for the council to stop producing reports, whose primary aim appears to be meeting the statutory requirements at minimum cost, and focus more of their attention on addressing and resolving the real issues in Farnham by introducing measures to reduce air pollution. Increasing levels of air pollution in Farnham are, on average, reducing other parts, well, reducing air pollution, increasing the level of air pollution in Farnham is not acceptable, even if the standards are, on average, reducing in other parts of the borough. This is an intolerable state of affairs, it's causing serious health, serious health issues to people in my ward. They have to live with this increasing polluted environment. Can I have it minuted, that I for one do not consider that this fictional Farnham Air Quality Annual Progress Report satisfies Waverley's legal obligations? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, councillor. I don't think we're in a position to minut your comment, but I invite the Leader to respond.
Thank you very much. Let's make it quite clear, this is a Waverley report, it doesn't just refer to one place. However, I have some sympathy with the Farnham members, with the traffic problems, and there are other places in the borough that has them as well. I think the A3016 is probably through Upper Hail, for those that don't know, I'm not too sure, but I believe that's where it is. And I remind members that we are the monitoring authority, we are not the authority responsible for the measures to deal with this. However, we have applied to DEFRA for a grant to help deal with some of these problems, which it seems are caused by diesel cars, perhaps Volkswagen's that have got something fitted in them to give a bad reading, I don't know. But anyway, those are matters that we will take into account, and we will continue as the monitoring authority to do our best to get the enforcement authority to do something. Thank you.
Thank you, Leader. I have no further speakers on part two items, Leader. Are these minutes therefore, unless you want to round up, unless, are these minutes therefore agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Right. Moving on then, the minutes of the Licensing and Regulatory Meeting held on the twenty-fourth of September, councillor Inchamore.
I'm pleased to present the minutes of the Licensing and Regulatory Committee, held on the twenty-fourth of September 2015, and I believe I have a second.
Thank you. I'm pleased to second, Mr Mayor. Thank you.
There is one item in part one, an interim fee of a hundred and fifty pounds for three-year Hackney carriage licences. The government has decreed that three-year licences must be made available from the start of October. We don't review our fees until the end of the financial year, but the suggested interim fee represents a realistic assessment of the costs involved, and it'll be reviewed again at the end of the year. I commend it to council.
Are there any speakers? In that case, we go to the recommendation, recommendation four, on page two-hundred-and-one, is that agreed?
Agreed.
There are no matters in part two, and that concludes my report.
Is the report agreed?
Agreed.
Moving on then to the minutes of the Audit Committee, held on the fifteenth of September, councillor Edwards.
I'd like to present the minutes of the Audit Committee, fifteenth of September 2015. Do I have a second, please?
Please, Mr Mayor, to second the minutes.
Thank you. Mr Mayor, there are, there's one item in part one, which is the updated committee terms of reference, and with regard to this particular subject, I'd like to pay tribute to my fellow councillors on the Audit Committee, who have shown amazing expertise in this particular area, and have made some very strong recommendations accepted by the officers, and I really am pleased with the updated terms of reference. I recommend the updated terms of reference.
Thank you. Are there any speakers? In that case, we go, oh, sorry, councillor Williamson.
Thank you once again, Mr Mayor. I'd like to comment on the Audit Committee minutes, which refer to the 2014-15 audit.
Excuse me, we're talking about the recommendation one, the updated terms of reference. Right, I'll come back to you. That's going back to the recommendation on the updated committee terms of reference, are there any speakers? In that case, we go to that recommendation, recommendation one, on page two-hundred-and-three, is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. There is one item under part two, which is the External Audit Findings Report. I do believe we have some speakers on this, Mr Mayor.
Item eighteen, councillor Williamson.
Getting ahead of myself, Mr Mayor. Yes, I'd like to comment on the Audit Committee's minutes, which refer to the 2014-15 audit report, in which no mention...
Can I just stop you slightly?
Yes.
This item eighteen, which you've asked to speak on, specifically refers to the audit report ending, the year ending thirty-first of March 2015.
Exactly. Twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen.
Okay, all right, then, carry on.
Well, it makes no mention, is made of the two-hundred-thousand-pound-plus fraud, which has been widely reported in the press.
Again, then I'll come back to my point, I think that we will find that was referred to in the previous year's audit report, not this audit report.
I thought it occurred within this monitoring period, within, it was in April 2014, which is in the 2014-15 monitoring report period.
Okay, well, carry on then.
Is that correct?
I'm advised it was referred to in the previous report, but, you know, do carry on.
It may very well have been, Mr Mayor. It should have been in this year's audit report, since it occurred in April fourteen. In this instance, it's worrying that the minutes show that the Audit Committee were satisfied with the audit findings, despite the obvious inaccuracies and omissions, which were learned through the press and through the Waverley web website. The committee and the executive have accepted the audit findings, despite knowing that a fraud event which occurred during the reporting period had... fraud event which occurred during the reporting period had been covered up. It would appear that the...
I think you just need to be careful of the language you're using. There is an ongoing police investigation, so I do think you need to be somewhat circumspect on the terminology you use.
I'm trying to be, Mr Mayor. It would appear that the fraud occurred in April 2014, not once, but on three separate occasions, payments were made by the council into the fraudster's account for imaginary works. It seems it would have continued if the bank had not alerted the council to the fact that the recipient...
Again, with great respect, councillor Williamson, I think this is being distinctly unhelpful. I think you need to be careful about what statement you're going to make, and what questions you might want to ask, because I think seeing that the whole thing is subject to a police investigation, as I said before, you need to be very careful what you say.
Mr Mayor, I'm sorry, but on a point of order, don't ask me what standing order it is, because I don't know, I do not think we should be entering any debate whatsoever on this issue, because it is part of an ongoing investigation by the police. Some statements have been made by a fellow councillor, which I take great exception to, and at the same time, I don't think some of the comments made by him are necessarily accurate. Therefore, with your indulgence, Mr Mayor, I think we should move on.
I say, I am inclined to agree with you. If you have a brief statement or brief question to make, I will allow it, councillor Williamson, because, you know, but I think you do, as we say, need to be extremely careful in these circumstances about what you are suggesting.
Thank you once again, Mr Mayor, for your advice. I was in fact saying no more than what has been said in the press.
Well, I think that even that, with great respect, is unhelpful. I think if you have information or have a question to ask of the administration, then you should put it, and leave it at that.
Well, I think the questions, I suppose I've got two questions, really. One is, were mires the contractor informed about the fraud?
Again, is this relevant? Excuse me, I am going to stop you if you continue like this. I mean, I think, I understand it is an issue of public interest, there has been a public statement, and I think you need to be very careful about going anything beyond that at all. I will, I don't think that frankly, at this stage of the proceedings, any more we can say. You have raised the issue, and I think leave it at that. I'll invite the chairman of the committee to respond.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd just say, I can understand, when you read the headlines in the newspapers, you know, it sounds pretty awful, okay? I don't think you phrased your question very well here, but I would point out to you, the external auditors' report, it does say in there, which is open to public scrutiny, and has been published and agreed, and I've signed off, it does say in there exactly what happened and what's happening. So we're not trying to hide anything here, okay, we're trying to get it sorted. I have copies of the previous council meetings, and the audit reports here in my hand, open to all councillors, and it was stated on those documents, you can go back and look in the minutes, exactly what the situation is. It was done under exclusion of press and public, but all members were able to access that information, okay? That's all I can say to you. I understand where you're coming from, but I think you've got it wrong here, I mean, be very careful what you say, okay? I can understand where you're coming from, but we are doing our very best, and we're not trying to hide anything here. Okay, thank you.
Councillor Fraser, you also put your name down to speak on this topic. I imagine it was properly somewhat similarly related, if it isn't, then fine, but if it is related to exactly what's been talked about, I would suggest we leave it with the statement from the chairman of this committee, and give you the information which he's offering you.
Mr Chairman, thank you. Yes, I would like that. Simply to add that, as a councillor, a new councillor on this council, I was shocked to read what was in the paper, and I could find...
Again, again, with respect, you know, you're, you know, what you're basing, you're basing your view on a press report. I think you need to look at the public statement which has been made by this council, and review it the light of that. If you've got a question on the statement that's been made by this council, or a question on the statement made by this council's auditors, fair enough, but I think to, you know, repeat allegations made by past councillors is not helpful.
Can I ask you to confirm, please, that the...
Mr Mayor, can I just add something else?
Please do.
Can I ask you to speak to me after the meeting, okay, and I'll explain what happened, and then, you know, hopefully I can satisfy your concerns.
For members' information, can you confirm there now, that the announcement of the fraud was properly covered in your audit's report for 2014? Financial year 2015 makes no mention of it. Is that so?
Shall I read out the statement from the external auditors? Would you like me to do that? No? Okay. It says, "The issue is matters in relation to fraud." Okay. Commentary, "We have previously discussed the risk of fraud with the Audit Committee, and been made aware of an external fraud affecting the council in April 2014. An investigation was immediately conducted, and processes and awareness within the finance team have been strengthened." Okay? "We have not been made aware of any other incidents in the period, and no issues have been identified during the course of our audit relating to 2013, 2014." That's the statement, and it's quite clear there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor, any other comments you wish to make?
That concludes my report.
Report agreed.
Agreed.
No other items go into exempt, we call the end of the meeting, and I invite members to join me in the mayor's parlour later on. Thank you. Please rise whilst the mayor leaves the chamber.